You can sit right there, you can sit right there, Mark. I'm not gonna be here. It's all right, I talked to the...
Come on over here, Mark.
Did I take your chair?
This is where we're down at, huh?
Who are we going with first, Tommy?
Sure, we're gonna...
We're all ready, everybody's...
Yeah, what's it? Duty before age or...
Age before duty, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Age before life.
Close enough.
Two points higher and he could have been a firefighter.
All right, well, we will start off with police, Chief Shepherd, you're up.
Thanks, sir. Uh, for January statistics, uh, calls for service, eleven hundred ninety-four, offensive reports, a hundred twenty-eight, forty-one arrests, thirty-nine actions, and eighty-three citations.
Calls for service, now, by the way, do you think it's because of the cold weather or what?
Oh, yeah. Uh, the bad guys don't like it anymore than we do. January, our overtime was ten thousand twenty-seven. And, the part you all love, I have a laundry list of legislative requests.
Tis the season.
Yes, it is. And I'll start, uh, I'll try to follow in order of my, uh, agenda. Uh, the first legislative request is to appropriate ninety-nine thousand four hundred and twenty dollars from within the capital equipment fund to purchase two twenty-fourteen Dodge Charger police sedans, one twenty-fourteen Ford SUV PPV, which, uh, means police pursuit vehicle. Comma, equip all three with the required safety emergency equipment and graphic patches, packages for each. Any questions? I bet there are some.
I'm thinking about a road car, you got a Ford out there?
Well, I'm leaving in two months, so, I'll be gone before it, it gets here.
Forever ride?
Yeah.
Let's see, that's gotta be...
Yes, uh, the SUV is for Officer Emby for the K-9, uh, uh, unit. And, um, when we looked at this, you know, we, we considered going with just three Chargers. But the, um, the Ford SUV as a K-9 unit is not really all that much more expensive than the Chargers.
No, uh, very little. The Charger is still the, the least expensive, uh, police pursuit package, uh, available. But, uh, I think this Ford's, uh, raw price is about fifteen hundred more. And, um, well, it's, uh, it's, well, it's...
Keith, do you know, is, is it off the excursion or the... Uh, it's, it's an SUV, it's probably the Explorer, I mean, excursion's pretty big.
Yeah, that's, that's true. Uh, basically what it is, it's the Ford Taurus, uh, uh, police packet, or police platform, but with an SUV body.
Right.
It's all, it's, uh, four-wheel, it's all-wheel drive, not to be confused with four-wheel drive. It's all-wheel drive and it's pursuit rated, whereas like the Dodge Durango is available, but it's not pursuit rated. And, uh, certainly, uh, we want that capability with any cars assigned to patrol.
What does that mean, pursuit rated? What does that mean, that it turns better or goes faster or...
Well, that's a, it's a combination of things, uh, um, to give you an example, uh, in law enforcement, we have two, uh, annual tests of, uh, police vehicles. One's done in, uh, California and one's done by Michigan State Police. And they rate all the cars that are, uh, that the vendors, uh, put out there for, for police purposes. And, uh, to be, uh, uh, pursuit rated, uh, anything from, uh, suspension to, you know, high-speed rated tires, a combination of things, uh, that may truly make a, a pursuit vehicle. And the thing about these, uh, SUVs, if you took its civilian counterpart, first thing you'd notice is it sets about three inches larger to the ground to provide cornering.
They use a different wheel on police cars, too.
They do, they use an all steel, uh, heavy-duty wheel.
Chief, when we, uh, when we do the driving training then, will Officer Emby have to do it in the SUV? Or will he be able to do it in the Charger that we, you know, are gonna be using for that purpose?
Yeah, well, um, I would, uh, recommend it be in the Charger. It's because, uh, we tear that car up when, when we do driver training.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it's, uh, it's not so much, uh, what you're driving more than it is, uh, uh, to, you know, re-familiarize yourself with tactics and techniques.
Okay.
Yeah, he's a certified driving instructor.
No, 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 I'm not, but there's a class that I follow that can, that he can take for SUV or...
Oh, I didn't know that.
Classes that they can take to be certified.
Well, you were my instructor when I was a grand old...
We is, I assist with instructors, but I'm not certified.
Okay.
I'm a fireman instructor.
Well, you do more than what's, what, uh, they did.
Academy instructor, too, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, they have a class just for that.
Okay, okay.
Uh, it's, it's, it's money well spent, I mean, from, from a litigation perspective.
Yeah, that's why I was asking, I just, I didn't know. He's gonna be, he's gonna be driving the SUV.
Mm-hmm.
If he's involved in pursuit, it's gonna be in the SUV. All right.
Yes, these are all, uh, both, both, uh, the Dodge and the Ford are, uh, based on state bid prices.
How much is the Ford?
So, it's ninety-nine for all three?
Yeah. The Ford, one thing about the Ford, uh, the, uh, with, with the Chargers, we can't, uh, transfer, uh, much of the, uh, emergency equipment. So, the upfitting price is, is much less, whereas the, the Ford SUV...
Oh, yeah, that was another reason why we went with the Ford SUV is because in the new Charger, we can't get the K-9 piece out of the back of, of Emby's current car and put it in a new Charger. We would have to get a new one anyway.
Right.
So, that was a, so that was another reason why it made sense to go with the SUV instead of going with another Charger.
And, uh, his K-9 car is a twenty-ten Dodge Charger. The twenty-ten will not fit in a twenty-eleven. Or, a twenty-eleven will fit in a twenty-fourteen, but a twenty-ten, they made, they made what Chrysler called subtle exterior, uh, cosmetic changes, but it was enough that some of that stuff won't, won't fit. So...
Same with the old Crown, it's going to the new Crown.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the new sedans.
Right.
So, this is all modifications, all the pulling out and putting in and graphics and...
Everything.
All the game and stuff in the SUV and all that.
Yes, it's all turnkey.
No other...
I wanna say our planning document had, it was about, I think it was sixty-something for two of the Chargers and we had forty for the SUV, so, I think this ninety-nine...
It's less.
It's a little less than what we were reporting on the planning document.
Oh, it's four hundred, it's four hundred five, we're here.
Five grand, six grand, or budget?
Yeah, the, uh, the upfitting for the, uh, Ford is nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. And the truck itself... It's in here. Uh, the base, the base price is twenty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty. And, um, that's the state bid. It's not, you know, that's, it's a little bit more than that because of some options we got.
That's the SUVs?
Yeah, it's about twenty-five.
Are they white?
Yes.
What are the Dodgers?
They are, um, twenty, twenty-four. It's twenty-three, oh, it's twenty-four thousand, twenty-three thousand nine hundred and sixty-three.
I don't get all the gold cars without smell.
Well, I'll speak again, I don't know if you want to go that way, but a lot of municipalities are looking to go to all the SUVs. You don't know that, what are you, the Ford interceptors, because they just don't hold big guys like myself. I can't get in and out of sedans. So, even Granville's even looking to purchase one as well, and I know Ralsburg, a lot of big ABC CPDs going to them, too.
Oh, Columbus bought fifty of them.
Yep, they're all going to the SUVs because of the size.
You know, uh...
How do they do a pursuit job, and how do they pursue that?
Well...
SUV gonna do better than a Charger?
No, uh, as far as acceleration and cornering, no. But, uh, that's not all bad. Because, uh, they can't go as fast in those as they can in a Charger.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the Charger will do two hundred and forty-some miles an hour, or a hundred and forty-some miles an hour. I don't know what the top speed on this SUV is. And this SUV is, uh, the standard V-six. Uh, there's a turbocharged version, uh, I thought, that's not to entertain that. Uh, only because if it breaks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So Lieutenant Mason gonna go with the same graphics package? Do you know, is he making that decision or are you making that decision?
No, I'm, I'm still chief.
All right.
I gotta leave my legacy, uh, as long as that vinyl wrap lasts.
I see.
So, this was, uh, this is all what we did in planning of the budget, so, has anybody had any other questions for the chief, Dick?
No, I've got a mention.
All right, you good with it?
Okay.
I'll take legislative request.
Did I sign it?
Uh, this one, no. And, um, the second one is to appropriate fifty-seven hundred dollars from within the capital equipment to purchase and install two backup radios, cables, antennas for the communications network. In a nutshell, uh, what we're trying, um, um, to accomplish is, uh, a backup of sorts if, uh, if the power goes out to the tower. Uh, if we have, we've had both power go out and we've had the generator, uh, not start because, uh, have no natural gas reaching the, uh, generator. So, anyway, when the power shuts off at the, uh, Blue Jay Tower, we're without a radio, a, a, a main radio. So, only thing left to do is to, uh, either pick up a walkie. Of course, the, uh, console has what's called a failsafe mode, but it's very low output. If we install these radios on a rack, uh, they operate on twelve volt or a power pack. And, uh, they're probably pushing, uh, about thirty amps, uh, to broadcast off of, whereas a walkie in this failsafe mode is, uh, hopefully less than five amps. So, it's for emergency, it's for an emergency backup. So, basically, we're just taking two mobile radios and we might even put a third in there, uh, not much more, but, uh, we're having, uh, uh, we're entertaining the thought of, uh, putting, uh, in the amount malls, radio, uh, in, in the, uh, radio communications room.
What's the reception like at the mall?
Uh...
Do they have repeaters there?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Uh, they're on UHF, wasn't, which isn't bad, but, uh, our eight hundred does have some dead spots over there. I mean, uh, before we got this new system, you couldn't go anywhere in there and talk on, on our eight hundred megahertz. Uh, the new system, uh, improved that quite a bit. You have to go to the deepest, darkest corners of the mall to, to lose radio contact. But, uh, but again, this is a fifty-seven hundred, uh, just to, to have this, uh, emergency backup. What dispatch?
Who's, who's the vendor on this?
Uh, the vendor is, uh, our, uh, main, radio maintenance, um, contact.
Well, what kind of radios are they?
Uh...
Company?
Well...
And a roller?
No, they're, they're Kenwood radios. Uh, a little less expensive than, than a roller roller.
Let me ask you this. Is this for dispatching purposes or just general communication purposes?
This is for dispatching per, uh, purposes in an emergency.
Okay.
Again, the scenario is we lose power to our transmitter site at Blue Jay and, uh, all we have to fall back on are walkie-talkies.
What frequency are you gonna be utilizing?
Oh, all of them.
Everything that we can transmit?
Uh, so, eight hundred, uh, VHF, high and low?
Will they have marks on them since we're...
No.
Hook up or whatever?
No.
No?
No, marks, right now, marks is not issuing any more IDs for, uh, uh, mutual aid channels. Because they ran out of, uh, spectrum.
They don't have any space, huh? See, chief, if marks frequency, a pretty popular system.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I wanna get out of here quick, I shouldn't stir that pot.
Yeah.
Let's just move on, let's just move on.
They even leave it after you. Yeah, you can talk, you can talk to somebody and delete it. General fund?
Uh, this is...
Jeff, we have this working there?
Yes.
Anybody have any other questions on this matter? All right, chief, leave it alone.
All right, Jeff, we have fifty-seven hundred for this item, right?
Yeah, we do, right there, spot on.
And twenty-five should be for this next one.
Yeah, the, the next two are intertwined in that, uh, uh, they're both, uh, 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 related to the, the same purchase. Uh, one is to appropriate twenty-five hundred dollars from within the capital equipment fund and transfer to police machinery to purchase a new network server and related software. And the fourth one is, uh, again, for the same purpose, but it's to transfer ten thousand from within the law enforcement trust fund to the police machinery. And, again, both of which are to, uh, purchase a, a network server and, uh, the related software.
Jeff, do me a favor, when we bring this up in finance committee...
Yep.
Next week, write a note down, remember to ask Keith, 'cause I, I forgot to ask this today, chief. Remember to ask Keith, he and Lieutenant Mason sat down and, and, uh, crunched the numbers on this. Make sure that there is still enough money in the law enforcement trust fund to pay for the mobile camera units. Remember, the plan was to pay that annual bill out of the law enforcement trust fund. Make sure that, remember, let's ask Keith it to, to make sure that we have enough money left in there to cover it.
Another grain from this.
That's what I don't want to happen.
All right.
He, he and Lieutenant Mason got together on this, but I, let's just make sure we cover that base.
Is that one, is that one here?
What's that server do? I mean, is it your mains?
Yeah, it's, uh, yes, what is it, it's got to do with the demise of, uh, Windows XP.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I think next month or April, uh, so, we've got to, uh, what is it, Windows eight, I hate, I hate Windows eight.
Uh-huh.
But, um, but anyway, XP, uh, won't, uh, won't do force anymore.
Fifteen grand.
And, um...
Yeah, that's not a good...
If you want more technical jargon than that, you'll have to talk to John Mason.
I just, I just was wondering why, you know?
Oh, you mean for the operating system, current server you use?
The mobile cameras that are in the cars?
New server to, in the patrol cars?
I think it's twenty-five.
Yes, and, uh, we're also, uh...
I'm assuming that's not...
We're also looking at a new module.
Correct.
Emergitech offers that will, uh, allow us to discontinue, uh, iLinks that we pay for every year. Uh, uh, long story short, the, the, the guy that designed iLinks and sold it, sold the company.
Make sure we have...
Emergitech hired him, Keith and John, and he refined the product further and now it's available on Emergitech. So, uh, we get pretty poor customer service for the iLinks.
Just send them.
So, uh, now we got the guy who invented this, with Emergitech, twenty-four hour, um, customer service and help. And, uh, it's gonna cost less than what we're paying for iLinks. So, that's part of this transition as well.
It's good deal. I know that, did you, did you talk about, this is where we're getting the P, the PCs directly from Dell, right? Is that what this one is?
The server?
Yeah.
I believe so.
Did you tell them that, did you explain that to them? Uh, I mean, it was cheaper for us to go straight to Dell than it was to go through, uh, data, uh, you know, our IT provider.
Right.
We just get it straight from, and then data, get it set up here for us, but we were buying the hardware straight from Dell. John looked into that, saved some money.
You wanna hear one bit?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's the Dell government, uh, rate. Yeah.
So, it's a state, it's a government fee?
It's what, it's the, it's the price that I guess Dell offers for their clients that they have set up on government contracts. Which I found out that although the Heath Police Department has set up with a Dell government account, the city of Heath has not set up a Dell government account, so, we're gonna try to get that and correct it so we can...
You don't have a John Mason working for you.
I know, I know, I know.
Any other questions for chief on that? Dick? You good with it?
Yeah. Uh, oh, the last thing, and I don't think it's, uh, uh, on, I don't think I put it on the precedent, uh, on the car, uh, request, uh, we, we would certainly, uh, like to see a, a wave second reading on all of them because they are all, uh, time-sensitive. I know with the, uh...
On all the legislative requests?
All for them.
Let's just go, okay.
Yeah, uh, all, in all of them, we're dealing with, uh, you know...
Thirty-eight prices.
Well, the, the price quotes, uh, fact that, uh, Windows XP's going out the door and, uh, of course with cars, uh, as I say every year, the quicker we order them, the quicker we get them. And we needed them yesterday. So, um, so I, I would just ask...
I don't think that the police machinery for the, uh, network servers or what, what they're installing, get it online.
Oh, I don't think anytime at all, I mean, uh...
Yeah, once we get it, we'll get data out here, get it set up.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, they'll have, uh, I've been running it quickly.
Richard Davis. So, he'll have it. Soon as he gets a word, we'll get it up and running.
Yeah, yeah, uh, they've already been out the look at what we need and, of course, I think John, uh, received recommendations from, from, um, as to what we needed and why and so on and so forth. And, the last thing...
I'm looking, there, there's noise at Captain Jack's sometimes.
Well, funny you brought that up. Because, uh, as, uh, someone asked me last week at council...
I'm not bashful.
Good, good. Uh, would you be, uh, interested to know how many noise complaints we had for the entire year of twenty thirteen related to Captain Jack's and the noise?
I will. How about you? Take a guess.
I asked you to guess.
How many?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two?
Or a hundred and four.
No.
Twice a week?
One.
One?
One.
All year?
All year.
Who's complaining?
Friend of his.
We haven't proved everything yet, chief. We just got it out of cut. Is that right?
The only one, I mean, this is all the calls to Captain Jack's, uh, last year. On August seventeenth, at two AM, uh, we got, uh, we had one call. Uh, complaint, uh, complaining on station, requesting to speak with an officer in reference to the loud music coming from the above location.
Well, I've had more calls than that.
So, they need to call the police as well?
Yeah. Yeah, we don't know if you don't tell. Wait a minute, oh, I just, I, oh, I, I messed up. There's two. It's probably the same complaint, I don't know. But on September twenty-eighth, we had one as well. And on the one, and on September twenty-eighth, I highlighted this, um, officer responded to the residence and, uh, I'll quote what says in the, uh, calls for service. Officer could barely hear anything and is not sure that what he did hear was coming from, uh, Captain Jack's. So, we had, we had two.
Um, is, this is in regards to the liquor license transfer, right?
Right.
Was the only issue noise complaints or was it just general fights and calls for service and all that kind of stuff? Was it just noise or was it other stuff, too?
He complained about the noise, that he couldn't sleep over in, you know, I read out a de Shox report.
That's why.
That's fine.
You can hear it from the room.
Wow.
Pace does travel longer than many others, especially...
Well, two in the morning, depending on...
Yeah, nighttime quieter, travel sound, yeah, you don't have as much other noise.
Okay.
I don't know.
That's probably, that's probably coming from next door at the South Eastern Equipment or the...
You can have that if you want.
I get more noise from that than anything.
You're still saying to me.
Now, he come, next stop's there.
There you go.
He's going in the right direction. Oh, that's all I have.
Any other questions for the chief?
How strict do your noise complaints?
Well, that's an interesting question, Keith, uh, because there's no teeth in the ordinance.
I agree.
And, um, I, I think I explained to this, uh, body that we had the same issue in Dehanna. And to make it enforceable, we had to set decibel readings, uh, in our local ordinance. And then, an officer had to go out and measure decibel readings for a half hour period.
For a half an hour?
For a half an hour.
Sitting there?
Yeah, that was, uh, from our, our law director. Don't just go up at the time and take a, a one minute, a one second reading, uh, do it over a half hour period.
So, if you got a loud, loud car going down the street, does that work?
No, because the, uh, the wording of the ordinance is, is a little different.
Huh. Art is held in court. It's not, we, we go by fifty feet away, stand, loud, continuous noise at the officer's...
For a car?
No, because it's not loud and continuous because it goes by.
Yeah.
And if it's amplified or not amplified or banned or whatever the noise might be. It's just loud and continuous when it's fifty feet away.
Yeah, see, our, our ordinance doesn't contain, uh, things of that nature to make it, make it really enforceable. Plus, you have to take into consideration, uh, that's what they do and, and, uh, uh, unless, unless we had an ordinance with those, some teeth in it. And, and, and frankly, I, I know that at times, uh, officers have gone in and asked, turn, turn it down and they've, uh, they've done so. And they've, uh, they've done so. It comes up. It's on your ear.
Are you suggesting we revisit that ordinance and revise it?
Not really.
There's, I think, we did that one time and discussed it a long time ago. Training for an officer was a decibel meter and it costs a decibel meter. I've worked for them and they're very, uh, classified, I mean, very classy piece of equipment and it's very expensive. I think it cost you way back fifteen years ago, I think they said it was over fifteen thousand, you know, for your equipment and training.
I can't, I don't have an officer I can give up for a half an hour.
That was my thing, I, yeah.
I mean, I, I, I don't even, we get nine dollars for a traffic offense and it costs more to put the officer, the fifteen minutes to write the ticket. So, something's wrong with that picture.
Well, for ninety-nine cents, now, I'm just looking at this, right? Haven't read and researched it. But for ninety-nine cents, I can download Decimal Meter Pro and enjoy it on my iPhone, iPad, or iPod Touch.
I don't know if the court would grant it.
Is that right now?
That'd stand up immediately.
You're gonna have spikes all over and you've gotta identify those spikes, you know, bird chirping and owl cooing and dog barking and traffic. Sure treat, they can pick up explosions off hundred mile white.
They did in past tense.
Decimal, decimal reader?
Yes, decimal reader, uh, Jay and I played with it in past tense. Uh, because of the, all the pumps and everything running down there, they needed to, so the city may already possess one of those.
Okay. I'm not aware of-
But I, as I said, I knew the sewer treatment plant at one time had a decimal.
If we do, I don't think we've used it in a while, at least not that I'm aware of.
Well, then we'd have to find out if the court's given judicial notice or recognize it. Just like a radar, uh, yeah, if the court doesn't recognize radar, blah, 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 yeah.
Okay, I guess, I guess the thing is, if they're allowed, the police officer go there and said, turn it down, and they turn it down, then there's really no reason-
Yeah, problem solved.
Yeah, problem solved, so it, now, if the police officer went in and said, turn it down, and they go, no, we're drinking it up, then we may need to have some teeth in the law to, to do something about it, otherwise there's not what you do. But right now, it's taking care of itself, because like you said, there's no reason writing them a ticket and then going to court and getting nine bucks out of it or whatever, you know, and they still don't turn it down, you know. I mean, that'd be cost of doing business, they'd pay that, you know, ticket, you know, hundred dollar ticket, they're gonna hurt them nothing if they get a crowd in there, you know. They could care less, you know, so. I'd say if it's not a big problem, I wouldn't pursue it. Doesn't seem like it's worth our time and effort. I think is this, is this generally with like noise that they have, like they're playing, uh, music on the outdoor patio area or something?
I would assume at the time of year, it's patio or, or somebody, you said, or somebody said that the employees were going out to back doors smoking, leaving the door open and the music inside was coming out or whatever.
We found that to be the occasion at least once.
Definitely.
What kind of ear splitting noise would it need to be inside the building to have a backdoor modem and have it heard at Fox Run? People coming out with blood coming out of their ears.
It's that wormhole between-
Any other questions on the subject?
Hold on.
Hold on, okay, we will adjourn at seven after and move on to fire.
Beat that, beat that mark.
Okay, January statistics, seventy-two fire calls. The cold weather you can see has increased dramatically. Uh, EMS is down a little bit, uh, I didn't get the, killed on the, uh, transports until today.
Good lord, that's more than double the fire runs, geez.
Um, eighty-four.
Mine says seventy-two. I'm sorry, transports have, have nothing on mine, what do you have on yours, Jeff, eighty-four? Yeah, this is, I printed the one off.
I, I printed ten of these off, whatever, and that's, the only difference was the eighty-four versus twenty-four.
What is it?
I'll put eighty-four in there instead of twenty-four.
It's eighty-four. Eighty-four, eighty-four.
So anyway, eighty-four transports for the month of January.
Why the increase in the fire runs?
It's the weather and it, it's still, for some reason, we're just going out right and left on fire calls.
Okay.
But the cold weather does increase with, uh, cold weather stuff. Uh, we've still got an issue down here at the, uh, America's Host or whatever, the motel down here with some false alarms. Been running some of those through the city where hopefully, uh, leveling fines against that because of the number of false alarms been sent in personally.
Boy, Chief, you and I sound like the nasal brothers.
Yeah, just-
That's all right.
I feel like a sitting duck.
Yeah, yeah, crossfire.
Oh, gee. So anyway, uh, mutual age thirty-five versus thirty-two. Can see those statistics. I have a legislative request, uh, as I mentioned, that accounts will be a while back, uh, Lick Memorial. A health foundation is going to swap out our heart monitors and give us the latest, greatest, uh, price wise, you know, in excess of a hundred thousand dollars worth of, uh, monitors. We swapped out some stuff with them years ago and been running the Life Pac twelve, Caesar, the Life Pac fifteens. And I do need to make this an emergency, uh, legislation because, uh, we have to have the paperwork turned in before the first of March. Or the way they've got it written up here, it applies, you apply for it as a grant through elevation to come March first, if the paperwork hasn't been submitted to them, we'll have to wait till next year. Reapply, so.
You got it written up for emergency?
Got it up for emergency and such, so.
Is there any additional training that our guys are gonna need then on the fifteens?
They'll get some training, but, uh, hardware stuff's pretty similar to the twelves. It's just the twelves are being phased out, uh, will no longer be manufactured as of two thousand sixteen, so.
Okay.
But, uh, the basic principles of using it are, are the same. There'll be, there'll be a little bit of change, but they'll be trading sessions, so.
All right.
Disposal, you just give them back to the hospital, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, give them back to the hospital.
That's why I questioned the gray area that, uh, uh, we'd swapped some old equipment that we had and did disposal stuff at the hospital, gave us these, uh, monitors and they're just kind of a gray area. Actually owned them, but the deal is they'll give us new ones if we give them back the old ones. And I'm sure they'll go to a third world country or whatever, they'll be tickled to get them. But it's, it's good for us, the way they, we've been paying about three thousand, well over thirty-two hundred last year for, uh, maintenance agreements on the three monitors that we have and they pay for themselves annually.
So there's one in each medic and then one in the reserve medic?
That's correct.
And that's what we'll be getting again.
If we have a problem with one of them that goes down and you've got, you know, that spare unit. And they're really good, uh, physio control as far as within about twenty-four hours, if we have something go down and we need it, that additional one, they'll send us a replacement.
So is Lick Memorial doing this with everybody in the county right now?
That's correct, all the fire departments in Lick County. I think they, they figured, uh, forty-five monitors that they're gonna be putting out in the field. So their steady stuff has been very successful.
The reason why I was asking that is, we have agencies that borrow our reserve medic when they have ones go down. They'll still be able to use this new one then, right? They'll, they'll, other agencies will also receive training on how to use the fifteen.
That's correct.
And they have still-
When we load out our, uh, EMS unit, usually the heart monitor, the drug boxes and things come off of it.
Oh, okay.
If Bradville, say, uh, had a truck go down, they would put their equipment on.
Okay.
On our truck.
All right.
And so we strip down other, we don't take everything off, not the big, heavy duty stuff.
Yeah.
Drugs and things like that that we're accountable for.
Okay.
Come on.
All right.
But yeah, it'll be, uh, killing why the same monitors.
Okay.
And we have a maintenance agreement we're responsible for.
That's correct, yeah.
And so then we go, they provide the hardware, we simply are on the hook for maintenance.
Initially and then of course, as we wear out some of the cords and just regular maintenance equipment that we do. We buy the, the electrodes and things like that, I mean, so there is a cost, but I'm sorry.
Is that part of the maintenance agreement?
Uh, primarily just, you know, batteries and, and any internal components that go bad. But you're gonna wear out cords, you're gonna, and the batteries are included, gosh, the batteries are, you know, two hundred and seventy-five dollars a piece. That's what I say every time we've ever used, we've had a couple, uh, uh, major components go down and, and, uh, ran three, four thousand dollars for just that component for one monitor, so we got our, you know, they came in, they repaired it, there was no cost. So it has always been beneficial for us to deal with that maintenance agreement.
Always great, so.
Yeah, we used to utilize Wally Horton, uh, years ago, he would put tests on them and things like that for us, but, uh, we're way beyond that now. So anyway, I do do that legislation if at all possible. Uh, expense report, sixty-four thousand for wages, overtime, uh, you can see twenty-one, this current year versus twenty-two last year. Um, engine two, uh, recently, we got it back, it was down about a week. Uh, injector pump, I haven't got a bill on that yet, unfortunately, it's a, it's a Cummins engine, that's what was spec. Uh, but they have a proprietary control over their pumps, so you can't pull them out, buy components and fix them on a bench, you gotta buy a complete pump assembly, you gotta trade in the old pump for a four and such, and it will probably have about seven thousand dollars in that injector and repair work. I just hope this takes care of it because we've had, and it has been at the shop several times.
Yeah.
And the, the problem with it is, I mean, you know, start down the road and then it just falls on its nose.
If you're going down, if you're going down Blackfoot Trail, that's not a problem.
It's true, it's getting back out. Uh, so anyway, that's what the computer says was wrong and such, and, yeah. So it's back in service and, uh, hopefully we've eliminated some of the problems. We're researching EMS unit, of course, that press release was made, uh, recently that we had some extra money, so, uh, talked with, uh, three different manufacturers, I've got specs and such from the Horton Company, which is the local people that we've dealt with for years and, you know, taking a, a serious look at a much lower cost EMS unit within that price range. I believe the bear gave you a price of somewhere between about a hundred and forty and a hundred.
So one forty to one eighty?
Different concept, but yeah, we could probably build one well within that range. On the Ford, similar to what you see Dirk City running around in now with Ford chassis. A pickup truck front end, which is what we ran for years, but, so anyway, we're researching that. Spelman is off, he's had his surgery, he's fine, I talked to him, uh, today. And, uh, so anyway, gonna be off for a while. That was a deck fusion, uh, his upper deck.
That's what a wig looks like.
Yeah.
How's that, uh?
Well, no, better not ask it, there's no good form. Nah, it's just medical stuff, I guess, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Um, this coming weekend, Saturday, Sunday, Cleveland State will be in with our confined space training.
Out of Boeing?
At Boeing, yeah. Classroom at Heath and at, in confined space, stuff will take place up at Boeing. We've got some real deep, thirty, forty, fifty compartments and such, there were, a lot, a lot of heads on.
Are there any personnel at Boeing that are taking part in that?
I'm not aware of that.
Not, not in their security area or anything?
Nothing, no.
That surprises me. I would figure just for the knowledge of it, if nothing else.
In all honesty, Bear, I don't know whether they were invited to play, uh, with us. But, uh, I mean, that's an outside, uh, security.
Yeah.
But, uh, I'll, I'll check with, because we still have some slots available.
Oh, no, no, there, there's some parts of that building they're not gonna be in. Yeah, no, no, I'm thinking, you know, if something happens out there, their security people are gonna be first on the scene.
Well, that's what they're fighting, of course, uh, sidebar or whatever, but Kaiser Ludo just, uh, did away with all of their EMTs out there, all their guards used to have to be EMTs and I think there was something either been in the contract out there. They came in and they stayed with the same company, but they struck the EMT status on their guards, which I wish somebody had talked to me about because they're very beneficial and they have several minute head start. Somebody goes down or, or whatever, they could be treating a, a patient long before we ever arrive. And yet for, just to save a little bit of money sometimes, you know, it's just, but I have talked with Boeing and they're, they have talked about the same thing and, uh, they would like to give them a letter of support that, uh, the people that, you know, they went from a fire department on site to a, uh, a Boeing sponsored fire department. Now they have just a couple of people that are kind of designated fire inspectors. Several of them are paramedics and, uh, no problem with them, uh, taking the lead, uh, till we arrive. You know, like, make a, a big difference, save what somebody's like. So anyway, which, uh, that'll be this coming weekend. Do we wanna schedule, uh, if we don't just go ahead and set a date for our CPR class? Do we wanna plan on, uh, safety committee meeting and then following the safety committee, we go back to Station One or have the safety committee meet at Station One?
So we did last class?
Have the class right after.
Chief, let me ask you a question. Would it be, for some reasons came, this came to me a few days ago. What do you think the response would be if we made, uh, CPR slash AED class available to the general public? Those boxes are in lots of public places, you know, it seems like anymore. And, uh, I don't think that trend is gonna diminish, I think it's just gonna increase. Do you think that there would be any, enough interest to, to do something like that or no?
We already offer public CPR, um, at times, they go through the hospital and then they send peoples, you know, out to the different instructors. I, I take a couple of calls a week that people have gotta have it absolutely right now and-
Individuals or groups?
Individuals. Come fall, when the nursing program starts, that's something that we get a lot of calls and they've gotta have it, but they don't have any money and, you know. I teach it because I'm on duty, uh, give, uh, it costs two dollars. You know, or somebody may charge forty dollars for a textbook and all that. And I've got, uh, Captain Miller and, uh, Andy Moffler are also CPR instructors. So we do offer it to the community when they call, but, uh, as I said, it just, I'm not as, uh, I'm much more reluctant to offer it because I have been stood up so many times. You know, they absolutely gotta have it and please, I've been burnt for muddy with the two dollar card, you know. Cause I'll always give them a letter that states as of today, they had it, had the paperwork as soon as it arrives. And I've, for a year, had a two dollar card hanging. And by giving them that letter.
That was other than-
Just stuff like that, so, uh, but we do offer-
How about Heath City Schools?
Heath City Schools, uh, we have taught- Heath City Schools, uh we have taught the bus drivers, the school help. Uh Esther and I need to get together because uh I've got one girl right now that was in the other day. And Esther called me just before the holidays and we agreed to talk after the holidays. They've got three of her assistants at the uh hard to say her first day of course. So we're gonna be doing, did, did somebody call you from the school and say that?
No, I've said this is happening, this, this, this thinking has happened.
I've done foot, I've done the football, the athletic coaches, uh we do the, the school nurse and her assistants.
Okay.
For the difference. So yeah, we, we have a pretty active part in keeping a trade.
Okay.
If they call, we're gonna take care of it.
Okay.
Chief, please answer the question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed in our church, we had last year sometime, we had a new addition built. I noticed that within that new addition, it had AED units. Is this a requirement for a public place that you're selling it?
It isn't a requirement, please, but they're, they're so simple to use and they're much, they're, they're so beneficial. They make the difference.
But what he said there triggered that because somebody asked me one, they said, what is that thing? I said, wow.
I don't know, um and you maybe, Dick, I don't, do you know anything about uh? Is it required through the Ohio Athletic Association that they have to have?
I think so, yeah.
I know the school system, oh several years ago, they came up with a statewide program where they put AEDs in all the schools and such, and it is beneficial to have in the churches. I usually.
See, I'm, I'm.
We're under, I'm saying here that, that certain elements should, if they don't, you know, with the coaches and so forth for the, for the legs. Yeah, that's what uh.
For the youth, for the youth leagues? For the youth leagues?
Yes. Let's see, I'm trying to think now, Robda uh, when you see him, has done.
Down, coach runs out and picks a kid up and carries him off the field. I'm thinking of uh, here's a lawsuit.
But they're simple, there's, there's actually legislation that if you're not certified, you're trained to use them. They're not gonna sue you if you put one on, somebody utilizes. They, they walk you through it. I mean, the semi-automatics will talk you right through the, the rest.
So we looking for the, the March meeting then? Is that, is that what, is that what we're talking?
Say.
Have the March meeting over at station one? Alright.
And then we'll uh.
Make it over that chief.
We'll try to, we can keep Tony's quiet and only talk a few minutes.
Yeah, that's probably my last.
Your last, but yeah.
Little irony.
Mmm.
Your very last meeting.
Um under old business, it's not on your agenda, but we did uh out of this year's out of this year's budget, I've got some uh a new server and some equipment coming through Alpha League to upgrade. You know, we rebuilt and put a new power supply and all that, but talked to the mayor and, and we just, we have pieced built our system since we started EMS building and we're gonna build it from the ground up again with a little bit better equipment at both fire stations and such. So it's a tune of about, I think it was about eighty-two hundred dollars worth of hardware that we're buying. They want to benefit the EMS program and all that. That being said, that'll go in hand in hand with the uh software that we're gonna be buying do, which is probably gonna be the firehouse software. Did Warren schedule any kind of a meeting with you on that yet?
I don't remember. He, he talked, I think he was gonna look to do that and I told him just schedule it with Jenna. So if it's on my calendar, I don't know, but it's, I don't know it yet, but it's on my calendar.
Okay.
Mayor, can you make sure that, sorry, chief, can you make sure that we can let somebody know that we let, press everyone know that the meeting will be over at station one?
Yeah, yeah.
Do that for me?
Yep.
And then the training will be after the meeting.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay. Alright, move right along, chief.
You need some playbacks, chief?
Use your sleeve.
No, I'll just use my sleeve.
Playing with my hip.
Oh, that's okay. I'll get that. Thank you.
Oh, oh, there you go.
I hate it when your nose starts running. Yeah, I know. So anyway, um new business, uh Warren is, actually there's a P O written on my desk. Uh the current exercise, and this is kind of uh an oxymoron, ironic or whatever. All the exercise equipment that we've got, the majority of it at Heath Fire Station One belongs to me.
I'm supposed to child or what you're not supposed to look like.
But uh but anyway, um we've got an opportunity to buy at, at a fraction of the cost exercise equipment from the Genesis system down in Jamesville, Genesis Hospital. They're rebuilding it, so there's a lot of uh weight equipment that uh I mean treadmills, uh electric treadmills, commercial grade stuff that maybe we're paying a hundred and twenty-five dollars and some of that, the weight.
Stair, stair steppers, universal machines, uh some freeway stuff too.
This is.
Unbeliev- Warren McCord knows the person who dealt with the disposal of this at Genesis and that person told Warren, I'll give you first crack at it. And they have a list of what they have and they have listed the price that they are selling it for. They said, I'll, they told Warren that they'd give Warren first crack at whatever.
Three and four thousand.
She, I mean, if we bought it and sold it the next day, we would make money on it. It's, it's some cheap prices on this stuff.
So the, the wage.
My three-year warranty on Nordic track costs more than that.
She fucking swears that if it's not his equipment, he'll use it. He doesn't wanna use his own equipment because he's afraid he's gonna damage it. But if it's somebody else's, they'll use it.
For the record, hide it where you live.
Lot of difference in hospital stuff. You know, when I was rehab over here, it's all the same type of equipment. There's a five hundred percent better than, I've got goods, supposedly I've got good stuff, Nordic track.
Warren's idea is that most of this stuff would go in the station one. Couple of things go to station two, but most of that would go to.
And we've got a, we acquired, uh we purchased it from Heath High School, their universal uh machine and all. So that will go, we'll do some legislation probably in the next month or so. But the, the P O was written and the prices today was just, it was under eleven hundred dollars for a whole, two pages of equipment. So we're gonna get a heck of a deal on some stuff if it doesn't sell. So anyway, we talked the other day and the P O's written, the mayor will have it on his desk tomorrow and we'll go.
My question to Warren was is that this doesn't then impact money available for other planned purchases, cause this is sort of an unplanned thing. So this doesn't impact the amount of money that we have available for those planned purchases that you budgeted for, is that right?
I always have a
That was.
A bunch of budgets, I guess, in game, Bear, and I've, I've explained that to you before. Turnout gear, uh we, we budget for so much turnout gear, uh and part of my agenda here is we wrote a grant for five sets of turnout gear. If we get that, then there'll be, and you know, turnout gear to outfit a firefighter head to toe is about twenty-five hundred dollars a set.
Yeah.
So if uh that's through the state of Ohio, uh uh fire marshal.
So if we get that.
Happen to get that, then we're gonna be buddy and uh I've got seventeen hundred dollars coming back from our training grant that we spent money last year to uh, sorry, Jeff. I'm just.
Where's my mask?
I need a mask.
Ah.
You have a cold or are you crying?
Uh just crying, yeah. So anyway, that um uh also under new business, uh the fire victim that was mentioned in the newspaper that uh Heber rescued was actually our people.
I'm like, there's Chief Weekly didn't say that.
I do. Uh Chief Weekly's still waiting on, on the information, uh so he can evaluate what happened because I think there was a lot of things going on. We were called neutralized and uh uh Heber did a nice job, according to our people, put the fire out. But it was our people, actually, our people and a couple from uh Lucky Township that went in the trailer, actually located the woman and, and brought her out. And started treating.
We use that heat sensor thing?
No, I don't think uh.
Just visually they saw?
I'm sorry?
Just visually they saw where the woman was?
In all honesty, I'll have the, I'll have the crew together tomorrow. I haven't talked to them uh cause Chief Weekly wants written statements from all of them.
Yeah.
So he can.
Has that woman worked at Kroger's at one time?
I'm sorry?
Did that woman, they must be working Kroger's here at one time.
Well, I don't know. The name sounded familiar, but um I don't know if he's, I was thinking somewhere I didn't read that. So anyway, but uh kudos to the guys and, and we'll probably put a bid for some sort of a, I mean, they're doing their job. However, you know, most people in their career, they don't only get one or two chances to do something like that. But uh that's what you trade for and it's nice to.
She had conscious?
Yes. Yeah. Matter of fact, I think everybody kind of figured, kind of wrote her off. Uh cause there was a lot of fire and, and it burnt trailer from one end to the other and for what I'm told, I don't know whether she fell out of bed, rolled out of bed, but she was on the ground and covered with a blanket. It's probably what saved her, but she had some serious burns and it may lose uh a foot or two or whatever, according to Chief Weekly. So anyway, but they seem to think she's gonna survive at all, so.
That's.
Good thing, good thing we were there. Um I already mentioned the turnout gear grant that has been, already been turned in. About seventeen hundred dollars back from the state uh trading grant that we write every year. The only other thing, uh let's see, I've got two things. One, with Tony leaving and all, can, could I be included as kind of a co-communication officer with the city? Traditionally, it has always been the police chief and I suppose that was because the, the communications, the dispatchers and everything went through the police office. But I know there's times that uh it would be nice if we had more input into fireside or whatever. I mean, just as Tony had mentioned, these frequencies and things, I mean, we're already set up at the firehouse to, to do whatever is currently with the, the V H F radios and things. Redone systems and things, and I don't know if that's what you're referring to. I mean, we've got the entire county matrix that was stand alone, similar to the same thing that you've got. What you're talking about with twelve volt, we're on a generated uh power supply and it's such, so. And when the windstorm went through a year ago, we had communications with a lot of people didn't. And we fell back on that system and so uh as a matter of fact, we were communicating back and forth with the police. What's, cause our state of the art telephone system went down. That was the frustrating part was when everything went down, I had all these radios and things and I couldn't talk to our police. It was just a lot of issues, but uh so anyway, I mean, that's just something we, we consider that. Give me some input too, on some of this radio stuff.
We can talk about that.
That and uh last but not least, the, the county, of course, is wanting to change so much. Uh they wanna change with this new CAD that they've got. They wanna identify us. A few years ago, when they went to the other CAD system, they wanted everybody in the county to go to three-digit numbers. Now Lucky County Fire Departments uh used three-digit numbers years, years ago.
For what?
As far as identif- identifying, you know, currently we're Heath Medic Eight, Heath Eleven.
Yeah.
And, and that was a, decided by the county fire chiefs and the first several numbers, one, two, three, four, five would be
I see.
Uh humpers.
So like.
Six was a rescue, seven was a grass truck, eight, nine were your medic units, ten was your ladder. So that's why we're Heath Tower Ten. Well, the county wants to assign us three-digit numbers now and we would be the one fifty series. I've already heard a little bit of rumblings that uh one fifties are also Whitehall. And with the mech system and all that, there's some concern that there could be some confusion.
Oh, you mean if the mech center was ever dispatching for us?
The mech center, backup and blah, blah, blah. But anyway, I, I just when, this happened several years ago, Dolores McNamara was still uh in charge and it's, my question to the county was why? They said, well, there's too much confusion. And I said, well, fine, you let the rest of the county go three-digit and we'll stay Heath. Heath Wood or whatever, and then there won't be any confusion uh about who they're talking to. Uh but uh so anyway, just something, you and I need to discuss this, but I
Okay.
Uh I'm just kinda, um it's just something I'm not in favor of yet. Just because the rest of county's told that I don't think we should have to. And I was told, well, if you, if you change your number to one five one, you guys can carry, you can call your trucks anything you want, as long as you change those numbers in the CAD. So I agreed to that. Till the other day, they said, well, no, uh you really need to go to the digital stuff, cause it'll be too confusing for our dispatcher, so. They're confused anyways. So anywho.
We'll have to sit down and talk about that.
Yeah, I think uh there needs to be some discussion about that. That's all I have. Does anybody have any questions?
Sure.
Questions, chief?
Very good. No, I just, if the, if the visitors, any visitors have any questions?
Well, I do have, I thought you just had questions about him. I do have something I was talking about the last week when I was sitting outside, outside the one asking me.
Yeah, Becky's, Becky's sort of like, oh shoot, he should have been in the meeting.
My only complaint that I had is, and after looking into it is, my family keeps getting woken up at five o'clock in the morning every Monday morning because of trash. And after looking into it, this company, which is Waste Management, can come into this town at four o'clock in the morning and start picking up residential. And I find that ridiculous.
Three thirty at what?
That is ridiculous. And through our.
What time do they come pick yours up?
Yeah, but it says in their contract, they're about four A M. Through their own contract. And I find that totally ridiculous.
Their contract with who?
No, their own business contract themselves, their policies or whatever.
Their business policy.
Their own policies say they can come in at four A M.
Okay, okay.
And pick up and you hear a ram, you know, you guys might be looking stuff by your house, but every time by ours, the ram goes, they dump it, ram pushes back. You hear the beeping at five in the morning. It wakes up my, both my children and my wife and myself. And I work night shift and I get home at four and I'm not happy.
Gets kids out of school.
I tried to skate safe. You know.
I think I'm with Christmas, you know, because it is a busy time, but not every Monday, every time of the year.
You know, since we've talked about that last week, gotta listen, cause we have four coming on our street.
Yeah.
And Waste Management is the only one that I can hear, but like he says, ever stop. They put that, what, what do you call it? The ram?
The ram into the truck.
Yeah, where they're, where they're compacting.
Hydraulics.
Yeah.
And they're the ones that pick up the, automatic pickup or something that are.
Uh the ram is actually the big device that is set back when you push trash in and it pushes it forward. And then put more trash, pushes it forward, which it, it just basically.
Are you talking about the arm that picks the, the, the container up?
Side of it, he brought him in one truck the other day and it comes out, picks up those big ten.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the bigger one.
No, he's talking about the.
The smaller.
I know, but that thing is.
Got some research for us, sir.
I'm ready, brother.
Like you are prepared with homework.
Man, I gotta look into.
I saw the email that you sent. I, I think you sent some information. No, I, I gave the information to John at the last meeting, cause Becky gave it to me. Oh, is that where I? Becky, Becky gave it to.
Yeah.
To me, I gave it. To me, I gave it to John. I told John to look it over so he could, you run it through his committee and stuff.
You've had some information on, on, on the village of Granville.
Right.
How they handle it. Now, let's remember that the village of Granville contracts their trash removal. They go, they went with a, I think a single hauler system or maybe a capability where depending on how much volume they have, they could split the village in two and they could have maybe two different two different zones or whatever. Is that right?
You could look into that, you know, it's so, our village is smaller compared to your size.
Yeah.
It's obvious.
So, I mean, so basically what Granville said in their agreement with uh, with contracting out their trash removal, they said, here's when you can start and here's when you can be done. And a Monday through Friday scenario, I think.
Here's the, the other thing too is you, what do you pay for trash here for the city of Heath?
Well, I'm speaking for myself. I'm with Waste Management. I went on their yearly payment plan.
I'm talking about city. The city of Heath. What a city of Heath.
Oh.
John Ross said it was like twenty thousand or something like that.
Granville gets it for free.
In that email.
Is that right?
Yeah, he, he said, but then you gotta be, go to one hauler and I'm totally against that. Because I don't wanna call at four o'clock in the morning, the dirt, trash didn't get picked up.
Well, you, that's where you work it out. If you have the one hauler that's taking everything, or if you get two different, one being residential, one being.
You know, Keith, nothing is perfect.
It's working well for, it's working well for Granville.
That's fine. And everything's working good here. We just need to get them started a little later.
Well, the other factor.
Well, I guess here would be my question then. Can we? Okay, if we're not the ones who are, if the city is not taking the responsibility of, of, of trash removal and, and, and going with a, with a single hauler system like, like Granville did, cause basically, I mean, if I read that right, that's kind of the way Granville is. I mean, Granville contracted out the trash removal, but the village ultimately is the contracting entity. They are the ones responsible, right?
The payment, I, I, I believe, I didn't get to read all of this. They accept bids, bids come in, they still run their bills through Big O.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, so Big O bills the residents.
I'm not a hundred percent sure. It should be in here.
I thought it said in there, I thought it said Granville for the water bills.
I thought it was in the utility bill too. So, so outside of a structure where the city takes responsibility for that, for trash removal and, and does something like that with it. Cause right now, that, right now, we're a hundred and eighty degrees opposite. We have absolutely zero responsibility as it comes to trash removal and residents and businesses contract with whomever they want to for their trash removal. Can we? Can we implement changes as far as you can't start before this time, or you have to end by this time, or whatever? Can we implement changes like that without being at all responsible for the trash removal?
We regulate all kinds of other businesses. I mean.
And we don't run that business.
Don't they fall under public utilities? Perhaps, but they're a business. We regulate other businesses? I mean, skill games, uh, internet cafes, we had the, we had the.
Yeah, we can tell when they can start, when they can stop.
Yeah, well, let's find out if it falls under the public utility definition and what jurisdiction we could have.
Same with contractors working outside.
I'm not asking for jurisdiction.
You can't, you can't put roofing shingles on your house in the middle of the night, you know?
Yeah.
The other side of that, I said, I said, you can't, like building a house, you can't have a contractor out in the middle of the night, put roofing shingles on stuff. Cause you know, start stopping with a contractor that can work and stuff.
At least Dirk has that, I don't know whether he has that.
Do we have, do we have laws like that?
I, I'm not sure. That's, that probably would fall under zoning. I mean, we, we have that noise ordinance that has no teeth.
When they sign that contract, it's part of the contract with the, with the company stating when they can.
Yes, yes, see, that's what I'm saying.
The other factor about this is too, if you'd go down to one, one entity or two out of what, five, I think we have in this town, i- i- in the community. You're gonna say wear and tear on your roadways and if, since I'm, since Chief doesn't deal with this, I can guarantee you most of those trucks are overweight. Because I weigh trucks for a living. And you have no one to mandate here except State Patrol if they would even come through. Majority of those over, most, most of those trucks are overweight and tearing up roadways. And if you go down all those side streets, when you're taking five trucks down a roadway, all your roadways instead of one, look what you're saving on your roadway.
No, look at me, I get it. I, I, don't, don't look at me. I'm, I'm not the one that can change ordinances, this body can.
Plus you get free trash, is how they have it. Plus they have spring cleanup that is free, bringing in totes as well. So that's another entity you can add to Heath that is, is a plus and it is used quite often in the village of Granville. Also, the recycling has gone up sixty-five percent in the village of Granville too.
Yeah.
Because that's part of that program as well.
Yeah.
So you're making a better city for yourself.
And how much lower is the rate?
Matter of fact, it will be lower due to the fact that you're having five people bidding to each other.
I, here's, here's, well, here's what I saw in the email. And again, I'll just use me for example. I, I, I'm with Waste Management. And I went on their annual payment as opposed to the monthly payment because it was cheaper. Uh, and it was one of those deals where somebody else that was with Waste Management told me, hey, you could go with an annual payment plan and it would be cheaper than what you're paying per month. I said, oh, okay. So then what I did was I referenced that person as having referred me. That person got a credit. Then I pay, it works out to about twenty bucks a month, like twenty dollars and ten cents maybe a month. It was just over two hundred and forty dollars for the year that I pay for trash removal with Waste Management. And that's with the bucket and all that.
I paid thirty-five more with shackles every two months.
Shackles.
Yep.
That's what I got too. You don't hear those guys, they come if that, my house about three thirty in the morning.
They, they don't come until afternoon or night, but it's different though during the day when they're in Heath, you know, where they start where they end.
Your, your biggest thing is you'd like to start later. We can talk about, we can talk about what contractor always want. You want it to start later.
The factor is they should only start at about being a, be, be a regular business throughout, whatever businesses are running this, in this city or any other city starts at what time? Eight roughly? Everyone's usually up.
They have a factory down the way.
Well, do we have factories here and two?
But they are not in, are they in residential?
We'll have, yes, right over here.
Why are they making that type of noise?
That's the residents. I got one that says this is too loud over here. Kaiser used to keep us up. But they had a pop off on their furnaces and some guy, that's what woke you up. But I lost my hearing. I told him about it. I just wanted to go to bed.
I'll take find out too.
So, do we know, is John Ross working on this? Is John gonna put it on his next agenda?
It's, it's gonna be on his agenda.
It is gonna be on their agenda?
Yep.
Both things are just the noise.
Huh?
The noise word to go into a single haul truck, thought again.
Let me, let me, let me tell you, let me just tell you right now and, and I'll, I'll just be straight with you, okay? Like I said, you don't have to look at me when you're explaining the benefits of going to a single hauler. I'm on board, I get it. Good luck getting four members of this council to be on board. I get it. I understand. I understand the benefit. I don't care who takes my trash. It's trash. I don't care if you come and pick my trash up every week.
I guess.
I, if I could get a cheaper rate, I would want that. I know you can get a cheaper rate if we were to shop it as a city as opposed to everybody individually. I get it. Don't look at me. I get it, alright? But I'm, good luck getting seven members of this council to agree with you, cause I tried juh, three years ago and I'm not trying anymore.
How many council members have gotten cornered anywhere and said government overreach, freedom of choice?
I, I'm truly believing.
How many times have you heard that?
It's like me telling one pizza, pizza hut, their only, only pizza company allowed in town. Because we don't want all the cars to deliver pizza. I mean, just, I, I, I'm, I'm with you on the noise. I'm okay with that. And I would like to see if there's something we can do. You know, you don't wanna tie their hands too much if they can't make, live and make money at the same time, but you don't wanna be disturbed at the same time.
But are there ordinances anywhere that we can restrict when they can start and when they can finish?
Sound trade.
Are there ordinances somewhere else?
That's what we need to do.
Community, that's what we gotta research.
That's what John Ross gotta look at. Actually, we don't need to impact the, your, your freedom of choice of if you like shopping.
And, and again, here, here it's gotta be, it's gotta be where the municipality is not responsible for the trash removal.
Exactly.
You know, it's gotta be.
Forget the contract. Can we put in, in ordinance and enforce it that says you can't start before seven AM or eight AM or, and you can't finish?
What's your, and I, what's your address? What is your address?
One twenty seven Indian Head.
Okay, so where is that in relation to your house?
Right around the corner.
Up, up, up a little bit farther? Okay. So, so we're definitely not talking about, uh, we're not talking about trash pickup at Best Buy. We're talking about residential, they're talking about the truck driving on down Indian Head.
Right in front of my house.
I tell you, I like the one hauler onset for one reason. It includes recycle. Cause my goal is for years has been to get everybody to rec- recycle, because people are naturally lazy and they won't do it. They go, take a little bit of effort. And I've checked with my daughters, she's one that got me on it, cause in, in Strongsville, they, city's responsible for it. They pay a flat rate and then I just checked with my wife's niece, they live in Stoke. And they've got a superbeater there and they pay about half what I pay.
I pay nine dollars a month in Moorehead, Kentucky. That's what my trash is.
That's cause they just pick it up.
City, city picks it up.
Some municipal pickup? When I was growing up in Lancaster, it used to be that way. I don't let them still as anymore.
Another, another good point to, to the one hauler thing, and I, I'm not in favor of it, but another good point in the, in its favor is that you don't have trash cans sitting out all, every day of the week. Down there, everybody puts it out the same day and it gets picked up.
I, I get it, but.
I get it, but boy, you hear it, you hear it. If you listen, you couldn't hear it.
Body language speaks for itself.
Here's what I don't understand though.
I actually support what you're saying.
But what I don't understand is what people can't.
This is what I don't get either. Clearly, and I, I don't think people in Granville think any less of their rights than anyone else. I don't think people, and Granville isn't the only entity in Licking County that contracts and goes with a single hauler system or, 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 or some sort of a managed uh, system. I, I don't, I don't hear from Steve Stillwell, the village manager in Granville saying, my god, my phone's ringing off the hook with people who are upset with trash removal. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't hear where there's issues. I don't hear where there's problems.
I don't see where it's the people. It's not the people as much going to the one system thing, it's the business. It's the business owners. Me as a business owner can appreciate the fact that you're not gonna come tell me that there can only be one environmental company in town. I mean, if we take that concept, maybe we should only have one supermarket in town, because you take all the heavy trucks that come in and deliver the foods. I mean, and, or, or maybe they can only allow one vendor to come into town to deliver the foods. I don't know, it's just. If, if you owned and operated your own business, unless you're saying you work a police officer and you have a trash company, how would you feel if the city decided that you can bid on it, but there's only gonna be one provider? You can always bid. It's, it's easy to say, but that's if you can.
Well, that, that's the competition. That's the business end of it.
We are not in a business here.
You'd feel differently, believe me, cause, cause Waste Management would blow you away. I mean, they would smoke you on price.
Where's, who, who does Granville? Who does Granville? Big O, not Waste Management.
You can make two different ones. The bigger ones and the smaller ones. You can leave the smaller ones with residential that can underbid. You leave the larger ones for your businesses that can come in and take that and, and have two different bids. You can have two different zones or whatever you wanna call it. And you can still have the big boy and you can still have the, the low boy. It's not saying you're pushing everybody out. But I guarantee you, all the trucks that you're talking about coming to supermarkets, they're all underweight because they have to be, because when they leave the business, they have to be under eight thousand pounds. Trucks, you can't, because you can't, you can't regulate them because they're adding stuff every time. And what do you think they're gonna save money on? They're gonna save money on fewer trips that goes, so they're gonna pack it full and even.
I know they're heavy. And you know, even if we went to one hauling company, they're gonna be heavy too.
It would be a lot easier to regulate that. It'd be a lot easier to spot check that.
Chief, we could, we could.
It's offensive to do, you don't wanna get into it.
Well, I, when I first became chief, I made a proposal to Dan Dubs uh, for commercial enforcement. We're talking about a set of portable scales. Yeah, we talked about scales. We even looked at using yours if it was too far to force it to drive and it was.
You have to be in a Crow's about three miles within stopping distance of that.
I think we have to check, we've brought John and the law director to see if, if we can create an ordinance that just restricts the time they can start.
That's half my battle. I was looking at the entire battle. My dad had that proposal when he was alive. Wait that point if you remember.
I think I had a conversation with him.
That's my fault. I guess I continue his battle.
When you go to all the different companies, they're cutting short. They're gonna have old trucks. And that's where all your noise comes from. You got one contractor and he has some points that, you know, weight, all this noise stuff. He's gonna have better trucks, because they're competing now and they're not gonna put their best vehicles out.
I see this as a city of progress, this is what you say. We need a step.
Maybe steps.
But, and let me get into another one. I know this is probably not it, but you know, all I have to say is two words, log cabin on Indian Head.
That's a dog.
We need to take bigger steps. We need to take bigger steps. I'm sorry, but it's my price and my house goes down because if someone's allowed to do what they can do.
What do they, what is?
There's a, a house that is put together by pieces.
Exterior.
If you guys get together, just buy it. I mean, just everywhere on the street, put in a thousand bucks and just buy it, buy them out and be done with it.
And that's your, your kindling's right there?
Hope our department say we're gonna do a little control burn and be done with it.
I know, I thought that you could do, but if you start, by building codes, start now, what's it gonna be like twenty years from now? You're not gonna have that stuff.
But to fix the problem on Indian Head, I don't know how you fix it.
You're not.
You can't.
I, I, you can't with the present stuff you have now, that you can add down the line.
But even if we add something, that would kinda be grandfathered into that.
But what I'm saying is it.
Prevent it from doing.
What about the next person that moves in or do that?
I agree.
So we're not moving forward, we're still the same as before. I'm not saying be like a grand, I'm not saying you can't have any red doors in the village of Granville. What I'm saying is you can't put a sliding glass door to your front door and take out the regular door and have an up and down window compared to a side to side next to one.
And a door that goes up.
Yeah, there's second story doors that goes nowhere.
That's an insurance disaster, man.
That should be a building code disaster.
How in the world they ever get it insured?
How did they get approved that?
Well, back when I came on council, there was no codes at all. Cause there was two houses built up off of Frank. I forget the street here. They had no rafters on one side. Cause I, they called me up there and it fell in. There's no rafters in it, cause we had no codes.
They cleaned up the backyard.
Cause mayor then didn't believe in engineers.
Okay, so we're gonna have John research whether or not there are other municipalities that have start and stop times for trash haulers in, in their municipalities. Is that, is that what we're asking John to do? You want, you asking me to have John do that?
Yeah, why don't you check that out and check that. And also talk with, with David Morrison, if, if, or we can see him next month, year or two.
Yeah.
Whatever, and maybe he can research as far as, you know, legal stuff on it.
That could also fall into disturbing the peace ordinance as well. And we do have one that is been okay through municipal court. And through federal court.
Probably be a lot cleaner to regulate it though as a business as opposed to disturbing the peace thing, cause now if I'm a trash hauler, I'm gonna say, well, this car makes more noise when it starts than my trash hauler does when I'm compacting the trash, so why aren't you ticketing him? I mean, he starts his car up and revs his engine and I'm, you know, he's only there for a brief period of time. I'm only there for a brief period of time. It's probably cleaner to, it's probably cleaner to regulate it as a business.
If we could regulate the start time at like seven or six thirty, seven, then if they're picking up trash, all you do is call the police. Police come out and sees a trash guy stopping at six o'clock AM picking up trash and say you can't start till six thirty. Well, that's a ticket. I mean, you know, it's pretty easy to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I mean, I would start baby steps, start with the, the time. Start time and stop.
Are you gonna come back to John's? You don't have to. This is one of my days off. I recorded last week because I didn't know where to go or to sit. I'm sure you, you don't have to.
I mean, if you want me to do next Monday, is it next Monday?
March, March third.
March third.
March third.
I could probably swing with those.
Hey, we need to move these uh.
Ryan, you're not gonna be here anymore.